Welcome everyone to the October 23rd Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors meeting. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just like to announce that Mr. Italia, Head of Zoning, will not be here this evening. Prior to the start of this meeting, the Board of Supervisors held an executive session at 6:30 where we discussed personnel.
And a potential litigation matter.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon, we appreciate that. And then we had our workshop and budget workshop where we spoke about many different things. Mr. Mulholland, Head of our Parks and Recs, spoke about 12 houses as of right now that are entered in our township Halloween contest. He also spoke about food truck permits and craft vendors for play wiki events. He spoke about doing more community events for 2025. Also spoke about the roof at the snack stand over here on our fields connected to the school where the roof was damaged and looking into getting that repaired. And also looking into a new HVAC system at the Dolphin Activity Center. Mr. Ryan, Head of our Finance Department, spoke about the police budget, sanitation fund nine, state liquid fund 35, the Dolphin Fund 14, and our recreation fund five. Mr. Coppins, Head of our Public Works, spoke about a new sweeper vacuum truck to be possibly coming to the township to replace our old one. He spoke about tree removal and brush cleanup here at our township complex. And Mr. Everett spoke about a smoke testing system that they would do to Mr. Everett's. Once again, that was for...
To determine any interconnections with the sanitary sewer within Pike Road.
Great, all right. Thank you very much, Mr. Everett, we appreciate that. Now here in front of us tonight, we have two proclamations. Proclamation Resolution 2024-38 thanking Ben Salem Mayor Joseph DiGirolamo. I'll speak on this. Over the past five years, Ben Salem Township, with the absolute help of the mayor, has been helping to put on a Back to Blue Motorcycle Rally and Ride from the Ben Salem Police Department here to Russell Elliott. It's been, you know, very, very much appreciated from the residents here in Lower South and my colleagues on the board, everything that the mayor does. So I would like to have the honor to read this resolution. Proclamation Resolution 2024-38. Whereas Lower Southampton Township is a township of the second class in the county of Bucks Commonwealth of Pennsylvania pursuant to the authority vested in it by the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Lower Southampton hereby resolve the following. Whereas the Back to Blue Initiative aims to show support, appreciation and support for the men and women in uniform who put their lives on the line every day. And whereas Lower Southampton Township has hosted a Back to Blue Motorcycle Rally for five years to honor the dedication and bravery of the police officers who worked tirelessly to ensure the safety and security of the motorcycle of the Bucks County community. And whereas Ben Salem Township Mayor Joseph DiGirolamo has graciously assisted Lower Southampton Township in supporting the Back to Blue Rally fostering a spirit of unity and gratitude within our community. And now therefore do the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Lower Southampton would like to extend our gratitude to Mayor DiGirolamo for his invaluable support in making the Black Back to Blue Rally possible. Mayor DiGirolamo's appreciation for law enforcement has been instrumental in bringing this event to life. Adopted by at least a majority of the members of this Board of Supervisors at a duly advertised meeting of the township on the 23rd day of October 24th at which a quorum was present. So the motion would read to adopt proclamation resolution 2024-38 thanking Mayor, thanking the Ben Salem Mayor Joseph DiGirolamo. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Perrotta. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. For the next one, proclamation resolution 20...
I have a question.
Yes?
Do we have public comment?
We will have public comment, yes.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely. The next proclamation, proclamation resolution 2024-39 thanking Ben Salem Public Safety Director William McVeigh, Ben Salem Police Lieutenant Robert Bush, and the entire Ben Salem Police Department. Once again, as I had said, the mayor is so instrumental with doing all this, but you know, we also want to give a huge thanks to the Ben Salem Police Department. So, Mr. Castle, sir, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proclamation Resolution 2024-39. Whereas Lower Southampton Township is a township of the second class in the county of Bucks Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and pursuant to the authority vested in it by the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Lower Southampton hereby resolve the following. Whereas Director of Public Safety William McVeigh, Lieutenant Robert Bush, and the Ben Salem Police Department has shown exceptional dedication and support over the past five years in ensuring the safety and success of the Back to Blue Motorcycle Rally that is run from Ben Salem Township to Lower Southampton Township. And whereas their commitment to upholding law and order while facilitating the smooth execution of the event has been commendable. And whereas their professionalism, expertise, and unwavering commitment to public safety have contributed significantly to the overall positive experience of all participants and attendees. Now therefore do we, the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Lower Southampton, honor and recognize their outstanding service, and we express our sincere gratitude for their invaluable assistance in making the motorcycle rally a resounding success. Adopted by at least a majority of the members of the Board of Supervisors at a duly advertised meeting of the township on the 23rd day of October 2024 at which a quorum was present.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Castle. So the motion would read to adopt proclamation resolution 2024-39 thanking Ben Salem Public Safety Director William McVeigh, Ben Salem Police Lieutenant Robert Bush, and the entire Ben Salem Police Department. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Rodger. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mrs. Bowman, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Now I would like to open the floor up to public comment. If anybody would like to please come up, state your name, your address, and as always, three minute time limit. Thank you.
This is for Nick. When you give these estimates from like year to year, how close have you been in like over the last, I know you've only been here what, two years? So, okay, about like the last five years, how close have you been in estimating? Can you go back and like see, like make budget estimates over and have you been really close or off or?
Depends on the budget.
Well, like the whatever budget, overall budget? Because it all comes into one big pool, right? So have you been close overall? The general fund?
For general fund, for instance, I believe so, yes.
What, you mean you think so? Within like 5%, 2% or real close or?
Ranges each respective year. Each respective year could be economic reasons as far as appropriations and expense, they're probably true in line, but we also build in extra for flexibility purposes, like I would say, you might have been here earlier.
That I understand, but I was just kind of curious about like your estimating ability and whether things, obviously, whether, you know, other things, you know, a zombie apocalypse, whatever.
Which you almost had.
Yeah, which you almost had. So I'm just kind of curious. By the way, I'm Frank Chrisanthus, there one hikes lane.
Thank you, that's all I want. Mr. Chrisanthus, if at any time you'd ever like to reach out to Mr. Ryan, he'd be more than happy to, you know, answer some of your calls or answer some of your questions.
And the budget's available online.
Yeah, I know.
All right. All right, anybody else tonight for public comment? Good evening, Mr. Cates, how are you, sir?
I am. I am just fine. You know, I spent my professional career in government and I, as you guys know, I come to these meetings on a regular basis. And I just want to tell you that it does my heart good to see the cooperation that occurs not only with Ben Salem, but you guys cooperate with Northampton and Upper Southampton Township. And it just seems like you have a great working relationship and that's the way it should be. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cates. Anybody else tonight for public comment? Hello, Mr. Stevens, how are you, sir?
As good as always, sir. Hi, my name's Glenn Stevens, I'm with 345 East Mole Avenue in Feasterville, PA. Now with all the, like a month ago, multiple people were yelling at me and Mr. Italia was threatening to sue me for harassment. And I think everybody's lost the sight of who's the victim here. That's me, I'm the victim. And I did not start out being loud, so even after Mike Italia authorized the destruction of my property, I came to you on the down low, very quietly. I didn't want to do any of this. I never wanted to appear here ever. I just wanted to have a resolution and I want, now I need to know why this was done to me. Ms. Bowman, when I apologized, I did that from the heart, but I was apologizing for my inability to control my emotions and my inability to control my volume. Last thing, in a world I would want to do is scare children. But honestly, I believe that this should be played in every high school in Bucks County in their civics class. Because our youth should know, should not be sheep. They should know, they should stand up for themselves and not accept victimization. I'm the victim. They should not accept that. They should not run like a dog with a tail between their legs when someone victimized them. They should go to a higher authority, which are you people, and they should demand answers. They should demand that the powers that be look at the proof of what I'm saying instead of not looking at it. I really think this is important. I think it would be great for people, and there's bad people everywhere. There are, if you watch TV, there are bad teachers who do bad things, not in our, not in our Lower Southampton, but there are police officers who do bad things. There are clergy who do bad things. Our youth should know that they should stand up for themselves like I'm doing. I'm not a role model, but I think I'm setting an example of not accepting victimhood. Now, we don't, we no longer have the opportunity to see the truth of the matter because it was destroyed. But while I was calling the police to please come to my aid and stop my neighbor from destroying my property, my wife is setting up a camera. So even though I don't have the police, what the police says, so Mike Italia's off the hook for the felonies he did, the one felony he did, it does purely show that Mike Italia did indeed authorize my victimization. Not to sound like Johnny Cochran, but there is no victimization without Mike Italia's authorization. And we know that Mr. Dillon said he was not authorized to allow my neighbor to destroy my property. I can give you the exact quote. So what I'm asking for is...
Your time is up, sir.
Real quick, how about in two weeks from now, I come up and I set up the thing and we can all watch the proof of what I'm saying so everybody doesn't think I'm a lunatic? You guys look at me like I'm a lunatic. I'm telling the truth here and I'd like to prove it. Is that okay then if I set this up for next week?
Thank you, Mr. Stevens, your time is up.
Can I set this up?
No, thank you, Mr. Stevens.
So you don't want to see the proof?
The board will discuss this.
You never looked at the police proof and now you won't look at my proof?
All right, thank you, Mr. Stevens, we appreciate it.
Mike Italia authorized it. Mr. Dillon said he did not have the authorization to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Thank you, sir.
See you in two weeks.
Thank you, sir.
I hope you will, you will give me a call, leave me still on my number, Sarah, and let me know if I could bring this video so we can, we can put this on later.
Mr. Stevens, your time is up, sir.
Either I can answer questions or I can show the proof of what I'm saying.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
If not, I'll be here.
Thank you.
All year.
Anybody else tonight for public comment? All right, seeing none. At this time, I would like to move on to our consent agenda. Line one, A, approval of minutes, October 9th, 2024. B, approval of budget minutes, October 9th, 2024. C, approval of accounts payable, October 23rd, 2024. And D, approval of certain recurring monthly bills, October 23rd, 2024. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we accept consent agenda for October 9th, I'm sorry, October 23rd, 2024.
Thank you very much, Mr. Castle. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mrs. Bowman, any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On the regular payables, October 23rd, page one, fire inspections, it says $15,670. I'm assuming that's 50% of the inspection fees.
Yes. Is it for Barry Isaac?
Yes. And the other question I have regarding that is, has all of them fees been collected or are you paying for the inspections and collecting later?
No, we collect the fees first.
So you're not paying Barry Isaac till you collect the fees?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion from the board? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Line item two, consider awarding the bid for the storm sewer, sanitary sewer, relining project. Mr. Everett, sir.
Thank you, Board Chair. We opened bids on October 16th, 2024 for the storm sewer and sanitary sewer relining project. The project includes the internal repair by relining of 220 linear feet of 8-inch VCP pipe and 375 linear feet of 18-inch CMP pipe in Lynnwood Avenue and Richland Road. It was also included was an add-on, alternate add-on item for lateral reinstatement. The township received four bids for this project ranging from $74,451.25 to $138,875 for the base bid. We have reviewed the references and qualifications of a little bit of the project, WH Infrahorse LLC of Dunmore, and find all documents to be in order. We recommend that the storm sewer and sanitary sewer relining project be awarded to WH Infrahorse LLC at the bid price with the add alternate add-on number one for a cost of $78,401.25.
All right, very good, thank you very much. Mr. Everett, so the motion would read to award the bid for the storm sewer, sanitary sewer, relining project to WH Infrahorse LLC at the bid price with the alternate add-on number one for a cost of $78,401.25. Do we have a motion? I'll make that motion. All right, thank you, Mr. Perrotta. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Line item three, consider authorizing the township manager to sign Grind Pump Sewage Maintenance Agreement for 1960 Clayton Avenue. Mr. Everett, sir, would that be a little bit you, maybe a little bit Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, I'll start off to clarify, it's grinder pump ordinance.
Grinder, apologize.
So the property in question has an on lot system that is currently failing. The property owner wants to make a connection to the township's sanitary sewer system. In order to do that, the, this grinder pump agreement needs to be recorded to go along with the property. The grinder pump will be set at the property and will eject sanitary sewer into the sanitary sewer of the township. We passed an ordinance three years ago to have this agreement set in place for any grinder pumps that are installed now. This is a covenant that runs with the deed that the property owner is responsible for maintenance and any type of repair to this grinder pump. And if the property owner doesn't take care of it, the township has the right to go in and then fix it and then charge the property owner.
And it gets recorded to put any future purchase of the property on notice. That's, so I recommend that it be approved.
And Mr. Everett, I guess the reason for this is just because of where the home is situated, down low, or...
Well, so on Clayton Avenue, there's, those houses are not connected to sanitary sewer, so they have on lot systems. This one's currently failing. There are six to eight lots currently on the correction management plan for DEP that probably we'll be see coming through in the next few years that other, other houses are going to have to do something similar.
Okay.
And the grinder pump, yes, it's set lower than the sanitary sewer, the gravity, so they need, you need a pump to get it uphill.
Were they previously built for sewer services?
For the houses, no, they're on lots, so they have septic.
Oh, they're all septic?
They're all septic on Clayton Avenue.
So just for my own information, how do we judge how they're metered for, for the sewage?
So they'll be based on the water usage. It's usually, you know, an EDU is roughly 350 gallons per day. So they'll keep an eye on that. And it's allowed, we went through all the processing, the permanent processing with DEP and the county, so.
All right, so the motion would read, Mr. Cates, yes, sir?
Just a quick question. Is this a commercial property or the residential?
They're all residential.
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 Yep.
And we're charging them for sewage by volume?
Correct. Per gallons, yeah.
With the pumps? That's definitely...
The pumps are going to be owned by them, so it'll be just like everybody else, so...
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Just a comment, don't we have a flat fee for sewer?
Yeah, I'm out of the smoke.
Yeah, we have a flat fee of per quarter, whatever that is.
All right, so the motion would read to authorize the township manager to sign the Grinder Pump Sewage Maintenance Agreement for 1960 Clayton Avenue. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Manager's report, Mr. Galdo, sir.
Thank you, Board Chair. Mascaro wanted to, will be sending notices out to the respective residents with a mailer that'll be going out December 2nd. Basically for Lower Southampton customers, they will have a holiday week service change since the holiday is on a Wednesday, the 25th, and typically the 26th is when they would pick it up. They're requesting in this notification that the pickup would be for the Saturday for the two, for the two weeks in question, New Year's as well as Christmas. So your pickup would not be on the 25th, you're going to 26th, but the 28th. And as far as in January, it wouldn't be January 1st nor January 2nd, it would be January 4th. So a notification will be going out, a mailer to each respective resident in first-class postage, according to Mascaro. Additionally, we will alert the residents on the TV channel, Facebook, and the website to try to keep them aware of this circumstance with regard to their trash pickup and recycle pickup. So I just wanted to, the board has already been aware of this, I just want to put that out there to the residents so they gain, gain some knowledge on this issue. The next issue we have, again, the annual fire prevention, we've got the poster contest, Supervisor Bowman will go over that aspect. There's certain criteria there. The deadline is October 28th for submission. Again, the posters must be dropped off to the Lower Southampton Township Administration Building, but that's all I have to say. Again, the ages are four to 11. We did get some donations from certain people and Supervisor Bowman will go over that part. And lastly is Toys for Tots. We were contacted by the Toys for Tots Foundation. They basically reached out and said that they wanted to put it out there as far as again, each respective year from October to December, late December most likely, they'll be collecting unwrapped Toys for Tots and anybody willing to donate, there's a collection bin at the Township Administration Building in the foyer area. And you could drop it off Monday to Friday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And that's all I have, Board Chair.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the supervisors' comments. Ladies first, Mrs. Bowman.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I just want to say good luck to the houses that are participating in our Halloween House Decorating Contest. And thank you to Jersey Mikes who donated prizes for the winners, and I look forward to viewing all of your creativity. Also, we are in severe drought conditions, so please be careful. Consider not doing any open burns or throwing your cigarettes out the car window or on the ground. That coupled with wind, we are in big, high risk for brush fires right now. So remember, mulch is highly flammable in these types of conditions, so please use caution. Outstanding work this weekend by Police Chief Krimmel, Public Works Director Rich Coppins, and Feastville Fire Chief Chris Cummins to coordinate with the Secret Service to manage the event that took place on Sunday successfully without incident. So thank you, gentlemen, nice work. Also, the fire prevention poster contest, we are working with the art teachers of Nishamani in the elementary schools, so hopefully they will have some participants. Like Mr. Galdo said, they have until October 23rd to drop off their posters to the township building. 28th, sorry, 28th. Thank you to Altitude and Tree Trails Zip Lining for donating prizes. And we will award, the winners will be awarded and recognized at our November 6th meeting. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Bowman. Mr. Perrotta, no, sir.
Thank you, Board Chair. I also want to extend my thanks to our Public Works, Police and Fire companies for making that a smooth event. I'm sure it was a huge inconvenience for everyone to assemble so quickly and get that done, but it was done in a fashion where I think it was minimal impact to, you know, our neighbors and surrounding counties to transit that area during the day. And it was safe and sound, which is the most important, most important part, so thank you. This time of year, the fire companies are sending out their annual fundraising letters, so please, please, residents, consider donating to our local volunteer fire companies. They need the money. And what they don't pay, we have to pay in taxes. It's unbelievable the amount of money that we save by having a volunteer service. If it ever comes to the point where they can't support themselves on, support themselves, you know, the township will have to consider turning it into a full-time service. And that will have a drastic impact on, on your yearly taxes. So just consider, whatever you can afford, these people volunteer their time, they run into your house if it's burning and pull you out, they save your property, they're going to show up anyway, but just consider making sure that they have the funds they need so they, they can make us safe. I would think that's good. And on the matter of safety, you know, I don't want to get too off the dais with this, but the, you know, I spoke about the event going off very well. If you, you know, they're seeing on social media, I think people need to tone it back a bit. There's no reason that the proprietor of our establishment now is receiving threats and has caused them to, you know, have to hire some security from what we understand. It's possible social media's blown it out of proportion, but you know, just remember, when this is all over, we've all got to get along. So just try to remember, it's not worth what you're doing if you think that's getting your message across. Let's try and be positive and move forward. That's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Perrotta. And Mr. Rodger, sir.
Unfortunately, I got to talk a little bit tonight because it's Fire Prevention Month and I'll do it if I have to. I have a little bit of experience, I knew I was a fire marshal somewhere at some point. I will tell you, it's 100 years that Fire Prevention Month has been in place. A little brief history about Fire Prevention Month. It started in 1922. It started because of a fire in Chicago that burnt down the whole town. And back then, they were losing 6,500 people a year in fire deaths. Fast forward to 2022 stats, it's 3,500, around 3,500 people a year that they lose for, you know, in fire deaths. And... hundred people a year that they lose for, you know, in fire deaths, and, um, it's important this time of year, change your batteries and, you know, do your little kid thing with, make sure everybody knows two ways out. If there's a fire in the house, make sure your kids know how to dial nine-one-one. Um, you know, it's a important time of the year to make sure that your house is fire safe. So there's a little bit of history about Fire Prevention Month and a couple tips you should, uh, practice.
Thank you, Mr. Rottenger. Thank you. Mr. Castle, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief, as possible. Please, sign up for township emails, LowerSouthHamptonTownship dot O R G. A lot of information is shared. I'm always reading, you know, someone wants to know what happened or what's gonna happen, that information is usually posted on our website, but you also get an alert on your phone, so please sign up for that. Our house decorating is going on in full speed, please check our website out, and you are able to vote, so, uh, please vote, one vote per email address. Be mindful of the clocks turning back on, uh, November second or third, about ten days from now. It will be dark, and there's gonna be little kids out, including for trick-or-treating, so be mindful of that. Um, also, many groups in town do a trunk-or-treat, a lot of the churches do that and other, uh, secular organizations, so, um, please take advantage of these events that occur in town. And finally, Mr. Chairman, there was a, a major intent, a major event in town this past week, and I cannot thank enough our chief and the men and women under his, uh, leadership, our volunteer firefighters, and our EMS that stood by and did a great job. There was very minor issues, but, uh, considering, um, this incident really national attention, chief, he did a wonderful job. There was probably things going on behind the scenes that we'll never know, um, I do, but, but it was a great job, and so thank you, and, uh, all the men and women who serve our community. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Castle. At this time, the Board of Supervisors, we will be adjourning to continue our executive session. When we come back out, we are gonna be going into the conference room, when we come back out, we will be adjourning the meeting, there will be no further business. So our department heads are all free to go home, with the exception of Mr. Galdo, and if, if people in the public would like to stay, you're more than welcome to, but once again, there will be no further business when we come back out, we were just gonna adjourn. So, thank you very much.
What's the, uh, date of the election next month?
Uh, the sixth.
That's the only meeting then?
The sixth and the twentieth.
Yeah, there we go.
You might get the vote.
There we go, yep, absolutely.
You'll get the vote, uh, number five.
Yep, we will see you at the, uh, the polls on Election Day. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chrysanthus.
All right, I'll get...
We need a thumb.
We're good.
All right, 8:50, resuming our meeting. We're back from executive session where we discussed personnel and litigation. And at this time, can I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Parrotan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman.